Fifteen to order. Can we have a roll call, please? Mrs. Schleeter.
Mrs. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
And I am here.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly post, Dr. Pitts?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Blessings. Thank you. Item three on the agenda is community comment. Per board policy, we allow up to fifteen minutes of resident comment. Would anyone like to make a comment? Hearing done, we'll move on to item four, approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension motion carries. Item five, consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve items five A through five D on the consent agenda?
Removed.
Motion by Mr. Alexandrovich, second.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension motion carries. School board announcements. Are there any announcements?
Well, I noticed that the UROX awards for December are posted on the website. And does anyone see the castle at Ben Franklin Library? There is one there. Castle.
A snow castle?
A castle, some kind of a castle at the library.
Oh.
So, kids like to sit in it and read.
Is it the reading igloo that they transformed into the castle?
I don't know, I just read about it, I didn't see it.
It's the tech, the boxes from the Chromebook. Instead of throwing them out, they recycled them and made a castle at Ben Franklin. It's very cool.
Oh. Did they paint them too, or? I don't know. Okay. And the talent show is next Thursday? At high school? Is it on the, was it on the agenda? I mean, I don't know if I saw it though. Megan, you can maybe verify that, if it was on the website for the Saber Center? I'm not sure if it was on there.
I think it's in the upcoming events on the district website. Do you want me to verify the date for you?
I do believe it's Thursday, so I'll be right.
Thank you.
The community Palm Squad comprised of girls in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade went to the state competition this past weekend, and the girls from Franklin brought home two first place trophies, one for J, no, Kickline, and one for Palm.
Good.
Great.
So, middle school girls.
I attended the Future City Showcase at Forest Park. I saw Amy, I know that I saw Amy there. I have to say, I was super impressed with these projects that the kids put together. And I was following them a little bit on Saturday. They were at the state competition downtown at one of the venues down there. And I believe one of our teams came home with a fourth place in state. So, very good showing for our kids.
Thank you.
Robinwood's gonna have their knowledgeathon Friday the 6th all day, but I'll be assisting with. And the talent show is seven o'clock on the 12th.
Oh, 12, okay. Dr. Pitts?
I sent an email out to everybody regarding the board interested, being interested in a tour. Looks like the best date is Thursday, next Thursday, the 5th, at five o'clock. So, we'll just meet right in front of the main entrance of the high school by the office. If you, if that doesn't work for you for whatever reason, please feel free to let me know. We can take a walk around individually anytime you'd like.
Thank you. Okay. Item seven, school board calendar. We have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, February 11th at 2015 here at the ECC at six o'clock PM. And a regular board meeting on Wednesday, February 25th here at the ECC at six o'clock PM. Item HA, the Human Resources Report, Enrollment Update, and Chapter 220 Open Enrollment Seat Approval. This is an action item. Dr. Miller?
What you had in your packet was the information regarding what we would project in terms of our availability for seats for open enrollment. At this time, we are not recommending any seats for the Chapter 220 program. The district has not opened seats to that program for the last several years. I know you've had an opportunity to look at it, and I'd like to answer any questions you might have about the seats that we've made available. One last comment, we do need to designate of those seats how many spaces we would have in special education. And we would have approximately, well, we'd have ten seats in special education across our programs that would be available to students as part of this number. So, when the board does approve a motion for the seats, Ms. Evans will ask for that to be part of the motion. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the seats we have for next year or perhaps the historical data.
Do you mean ten in total, or ten of the new seats?
Ten out of the fifty-six seats could be allocated for special education.
Okay.
So, it's not in addition to the fifty-six seats.
Okay. And last year we had eight special ed? How many of those?
Correct. We filled three. And what happens is, our special ed students are in the random selection with all of our students. So, as we random select students for open enrollment, if a special ed student doesn't come up, they're not placed in a program. So, through the random selection process, we, you know, didn't ever get to eight different selection of special ed students.
So, you're saying in theory you could get no special ed?
Correct. In the random selection process, they may not be selected at all.
But once you fill the eight, then you'd have to go by, pass them to the next?
Correct. Yes.
And we had four hundred and sixteen applications last year for our, what, fifty-some seats? Is that how many applications we actually get in?
Correct. Four hundred and sixteen.
Is that what it is?
Received applications for open enrollment. I'm just looking at that number carefully, Ms. Witkowski. It seems very high to me.
It does, yeah.
Yeah, I'm thinking she's, this is cumulative, I think, perhaps, not just that year. It has to be, because that's a very large number. We did not have that.
If you look at the next page, the full time open, 220 historical data, four thirteen is the total. I wonder if that's...
It's in the bottom section.
That's the actual number of students we had, with the four thirteen.
But then what's the four sixteen?
We'll have to check on it, but four sixteen is listed as the number of applications received.
Yeah.
So, I'm wondering, you know, we got four hundred applications for forty-four seats? Is that what happened last year?
I know we did not have four hundred and sixteen applications last year. So, I think that the title there, number of open enrollment applications received, may be erroneous because we did not receive four hundred and sixteen. I will check on how that's labeled, that data. But that would not be the case.
What's your, what do you expect, what do you expect to see as far as a range? Obviously, you know that four sixteen's not it. You have some other idea what really is. Do you want to share that?
Yeah, I'd like to get back to you with that accurate number. I think that's really what you want to know. So, I'd be happy to do that. Clearly, we get more applicants at the kindergarten level, at the freshman level. We may at fourth or fifth grade only get six applicants. So, you know, I'd be happy to tell you specifically what the number of applications were.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Since our enrollment at Robinwood per class is equal to the other schools, it's getting pretty equal. And we've decided as a board not to have open enrollment students at Robinwood. How, is that still going to be allowed with the guidelines? You know, because it's going by grade now, correct?
It also goes by capacity of building or school.
We're still going to continue with that, because that is the building that gets the highest flux just about every year. This year alone, I can recall probably twenty additional interest seats for that building that we turned away. So, and that's been a historical trend forever in that building.
Any other questions? If not, I'm looking for two motions. The first motion is to approve that there will be no Chapter 220 seats open for the 2015-16 school year. Do I hear that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension motion carries. Second motion is to approve fifty-six open enrollment seats for the 2015-2016 school year with additional seats to be added if space becomes available, and with ten seats made available for identified special education students. Do I hear that motion?
Still moved.
Motion by Mrs. Klein, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Mrs. Schleeter, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And item eight B is the Superintendent's Report, Franklin High School Construction Update and the Open House.
We are, as I've said a number of times, we are getting really, really close to the end of construction. They're doing some carpeting and some tile work and so on. We had to wait for some cement to cure, get the proper moisture out of there, so, and some signage and those kinds of things. So, it's about another week or two away from actually being polished and finished, if you will. And so, it looks like we're going to be right on schedule to have it completed, as we have said on a number of occasions, right about the beginning, middle, to end of February. So, that's a good thing. Taking a look at two possible dates for the open house, March 4th, March 1st or March 14th. A lot of that is predicated on the use of the facility. For example, we've got solo ensemble going on in there. We've got some big events that we're trying to work around so we don't stress our staff and so that the building can be prepped accordingly over the weekend. And so, we'll take a look. I'll know for sure on that by the end of this week and let you know about that. And as I mentioned, the tour, we'll do that for the board members on Thursday. And that's about it.
Any questions?
Project balance, do we have a, what are we expecting us to finish?
Are we what?
The balance in the project? What is that looking like?
The balance?
Yes.
We have a little bit of contingency left. For the most part, we're under budget, but that could be a dollar under budget. And we still have little things to do yet. We're still selecting some seating, for example, in our dressing rooms. We still have some signage we want to go, but we wanted to get everything done before we did some of those things to see what the layout looked like. So, we're in the process of some of the signage things going in there. We want to do some cosmetic things right around the large groups area, right outside the Performing Arts Center. We want to do some graphics and some things on there. What we want to, and we're going to change out some monitors and do some little peripheral things. So, in the end, the best thing I can tell you is we will not be over budget, but we will most likely spend just about everything. We did, throughout the project, there were some unexpected things. You remember, I was telling you about soil samples and those kinds of things that hit us pretty hard, to the tune of well over $200,000. Other little things that came about, which always do, especially when you renovate an existing building. We had ductwork we had to change, we had lighting, and we had some wiring and so on, so forth. So, that stuff adds up in a hurry. And, but overall, we were able to make some upgrades, many upgrades, within the Performing Arts Center in terms of our sound system. So, we have a greater system for a longer period of time. We added some things like LED lights that are more energy efficient and better quality for us. Steve Kraus has been a real asset for us in terms of those little tiny things that make a performing arts center better than what it should be from a layperson trying to design it. So, we're pretty lucky there. But overall, we won't be over budget, but we will not be having an excess of a half million dollars either at all. So, it'll be spent, but it'll be spent wisely.
I'm looking at the Treasurers Report, and I see 2.9 million is the balance since December. Would you expect to close it out by fiscal year end?
I would hope by fiscal year end, we'd have that all, all done, that everyone coming back, all the contracts will be done and paid out.
Thank you. Okay, item eight C, the Treasurers Report. It's on file in the library. Are there any questions?
I just want to point out that the general fund balance at seventeen point eight million, I would think, Jim, then that we wouldn't be looking at any kind of borrowing, short-term borrowing? Would that be safe to say?
Right, we didn't do any short-term borrowing.
So, that wasn't, even though we had, earlier in the year, we had looked at the possibility. Probably, I don't know, was it cash flow came in less than you expected, or I'm not sure why? It didn't appear to be close, that we were at 5.8 million is kind of our low, low number.
It was much lower than that by the time we got to January 14th. But we managed it so that we made it through.
Okay. And also, I don't know if board members have looked at the report, we do have a year-to-date comparison. Everybody knows that, which is a new format that we had requested. I hope you can take a look at it, and it does show that we are very comparable to prior year other than the stadium project, which is about 1.9 million dollar difference. Otherwise, other categories are very close to last year. And retirement is also less than we had saw year-to-date a year ago.
Just one comment, and I'd like to, and maybe Janet and I can talk about it, regarding the Treasurers Report. The purpose for putting that on the agenda was simply to notify the public that the Treasurers Report, as Janet mentioned, and it's in the library, because the intent was, as Melissa brought forward at the time, was to have board members ask questions ahead of time, which many of you have. I'm just wondering if we shouldn't designate something along the line in there, where we can talk about that in terms of Treasurers Report with the parenthetical references, say, this is for the community to be aware that the Treasurers Report is on file, but it's not necessarily in that, but we'll be discussing at the, you know, we wouldn't make it that lengthy, but something we should talk about just so the community is more aware of it, why it's there. But we can talk about that later.
I have a question for Megan regarding this. I know the documents are in the library. Is it possible to you, to put hyperlinks in the agenda to those items, or does Board Docs not work that way?
It is possible. Each library item comes with a link. If that's more helpful for you.
I think it would be helpful. Do other board members agree?
I agree. Actually, I had sent Megan an email requesting that today, because I noticed that would be very, because it's hard to find. Not hard to find, but you might not click there.
Yeah. Sometimes you, there are all those categories in the library, and you have to drill down, so you have to kind of know where you're going. So, it would save us probably all a lot of time. Thank you.
Okay, item nine, Board Action and Discussion Items. We have nine A, the Elm Brook 66.03 Agreement Approval. This is an action item. You'll see there's a link to it in Board Docs. Dr. Pitts?
Yeah, we apologize, this is one of those things I got in there real late, because we got it real late. And so, with that, I'll just turn it over to Mrs. Kroll, and she can explain it briefly.
This is kind of another one of those annual items that I bring to you. We have these agreements, you know, with Oak Creek for our connects, and we have this agreement with Elm Brook Schools. And we have currently, as we have had, three students who attend Fairview. So, it's simply approving the contract with them to service those three students.
Is that for next school year?
Yes.
This is an agreement that comes before you every year. It's the same thing.
I guess, why does it come now and not in summer?
I don't know, I think it's for their planning. And another point is that if you, if you notice on the first page, they have districts with options to purchase services from Elm Brook, and that's group one. Those are all Waukesha County districts who have priority. And then, they have other districts with whom they've developed relationships over the years. And we are not really in that first tier. So, I think they like to get it out to make sure they know what kind of seats they have, and so both groups can submit what they want and need.
These students have a high level of autism?
Or cognitive disabilities, significant disabilities that, that we feel that we can't really service at our, in our schools.
And the amount of the contract?
It doesn't specify, because they have their costs on the back, but it's a, they have a very complicated system. I hate to even guess at what an individual student would be, but we do get them individualized when they send the billing.
Could you, so we've had this contract for many years.
Yes.
How much, how much did we pay last year? Do we have an idea?
I don't have that with me, but I could, I could let you know. I don't know if you'd have that available.
I don't remember off the top of my head, because it depends how many students we have there and what those students are getting for services.
Yeah. They do change, it does change a little bit.
From year to year?
Yeah. Well, for example, like last year, we had two students there, but we added a student mid-year. So, that was, you know, that was a change.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Elm Brook 66.03 Agreement.
I would make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Larson?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, extension motion carries. Thank you. And nine B is a Legislative Advocacy Conference Recap. This is for Mrs. Witkowski, Mr. Nielsen, and myself. And this conference was just a one-day conference in Stevens Point. And we all attended the same session. So, I guess that we just want to have a brief group discussion. And there are a few links in Board Docs. Who attended from our board? Mr. Witkowski and Mr. Nielsen.
You were there for the resolutions, right?
I had been there the night before for the resolutions.
I don't know if anyone had any certain place they wanted to start, but one of the items that was discussed in depth was the private vouchers and independent charters. And the private, privatization and how private entities are taking over the public funds that are earmarked for pub, for public purposes. And of course, this was put on by WASB. So, there, as we know from the conference, that was just downtown, the state conference. Of course, everyone is pushing public education, and we as school board members, of course, are standing up for public education. So, there were several speakers on this. And they spoke about the fact that we as school board members were elected by our neighbors to govern public schools, and so we're the ones held accountable. And that with private companies taking over the vouchers, no one is really accountable for that. And there's just a lot of big money in private vouchers. Anyone else want to comment on that, on the vouchers?
Yeah, it's a constant struggle, or tug, tuggle, if you will, between funding these private programs first, and then the public gets kind of what's been left. I know that Senator Olson said that we probably won't hear much about the state aid until after April 15th, when they get a better idea what the revenue picture looks like. The other gentleman who was speaking up there, Steve Castell, I think that's how you say it, out of Alcart Lake, who I guess is in his last term. One of the comments he made, he strongly encourages you to reach out to your local lawmakers and have regular communication and meetings with them. His quote was, "It's a lot harder to vote against you if they know that they'll have to meet you face to face, face to music at the next meeting." So, just a way of getting your ideas out there. But in the latest update from Governor Walker, too, he had in here that he's called upon the Wisconsin Legislature to produce legislation to hold all schools receiving public funding accountable. That was the other thing that was talked about in here, is that they're getting this money, but there's no accountability. I think that goes hand in hand with the school report cards that are coming out, the district report cards that are coming out. And so, try and keep them and the teachers that work there on the same level as what the public teachers are.
And we do offer school choice through open enrollment, through, you know, public school choice. So, that's just another way that we're, we're doing it, and charter schools through public schools. And we can invite the legislators to our meetings to talk to us one-on-one. There's no reason we can't do that.
I think, you know, the idea was to give, you know, parents that are, that don't have, if they're in a district where it is not a good public school, to give them the opportunity to still provide a good education to their kids. But I agree with you that, that we do give them the option to open enrollment at a public school outside their districts. I think that addresses that problem without having to go to private schools. Because that's the argument that you kind of hear. Just to try and support, you know, that's why we, that's why they're looking at this, is because they want to make sure that all parents have access to quality education for their children. And if you are in a inner-city school, you should have choices. But I think, like you said, open enrollment addresses that.
I think we should be asking our citizens, are you satisfied with your public schools here? And do you think we're failing? Because we're clearly not failing, not in Franklin. So, we have quite a few people leaving for private school, but were they leaving before the vouchers came along? So, that's one of the big considerations in the voucher program.
Another, another topic of discussion was by Jim Morgan of the Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce Foundation. I thought his presentation was interesting. It was on talent development, attraction, and retention. And to kind of boil this down into a nutshell, it was, he discussed the migration cycle, the age of like a Wisconsin resident, and when they would get drawn to the state, when they may leave the state, their education or a job, and then maybe come back to the state. And they were looking at over the next thirty years, the population is expected to increase by 800,000. However, 766,000 of that is going to be people 65 and older. The prime workforce ages 18 to 64 only increases about 15,000. So, there was a Georgetown University study that says they're looking at another 300-some-thousand jobs that are going to be available in the state over the next 20 or 30 years. And according to these studies, only 15,000 people available to fill those jobs, which is kind of congruent with what we're hearing about a shortage of workers, which kind of dovetailed into the Common Core standards, which really was just the manufacturers and the Governor's Council getting together and saying, hey, we're looking for people to do these jobs, and here are the skills that we're looking for them to have. So, I thought all that was kind of in line with what we had been talking about over the last number of years.
He said 10,000 people reach age 65 daily, daily, between 2010 and 2030. That's a lot of people. And I was, it was kind of amazing to hear the business sector talk about Common Core and how they're in favor of it, so, so much in favor of it, because of the accountability and the quality that it stands for, and to ensure consistency and compatibility from district to district and state to state. And they, he said, when you're hearing about the public talk about Common Core and that they're against Common Core, a lot of it is from listening to the radio stations. And he said, if it's, when you're thinking about Common Core and the arguments, if it's not rational, it's political. And how many people, which we've discussed before, have read the standards, all those pages of the standards. So, that was an interesting comment.
They also mentioned the military families that move around a lot. There was one district there.
That was Sparta. That was Sparta, yeah.
They appreciate knowing that wherever they're, wherever they end up, they'll always be able to pick up where they left off. And it was a huge advantage to them.
And Wisconsin's population problem is also a business problem. And the ages 0 to 17, by the year 2040, the growth is only going to be 2.1% compared to the 90.8% between the ages 65 to 84. So where are we going to get our students from also? You know, we're going to be advertising for students, is kind of what they said, to get them into your district.
Seriously, it hasn't been a state of, like a destination state, you know? And then that's one of the things that they're trying to figure out, how can we, how can we kind of change that, make it more attractive? Of course, the climate doesn't help, you know? So we're almost going to be fighting that. So, but yeah, I thought that was, that was an interesting talk.
You're going down a list? What did you have?
My last paragraph here was just about Tiberia and the Wisconsin Taxpayers Alliance, but WASB actually has a really nice recap section on their website about all the conferences. And so if you're ever interested in some conferences you might have missed, they have PowerPoints and other things like that. Now, they didn't have anything linked to the Taxpayers Alliance, so his PowerPoint wasn't there. And this conference was in November, so trying to remember back and look at the notes and everything, so I was a little sketchy in that section, but these other ones had really good information, so.
And there's the link in Board Docs to the state budget timeline.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, it's really easy to read, so that was nice. So if you do want to contact any legislators on your own, end of Febru, you know, by the end of February, and then March through April, April would be the time to start doing it. That's when they start holding their hearings, is in March.
Well, the governor also spoke at the Friday session at the conference. I think he, the accountability issue, he's kind of certainly going to expect to put something in place for the voucher schools, but I think he's always leaning toward parents as the ones that ultimately choose. And that's, you know, it's their kids, and he seems to rely on parents to make those kind of decisions. I'm not sure where they get their information from and how that plays out, but that was one thing. He didn't really allude to any kind of, what he was going to be doing as far as the revenue cap or any, or funding. There was nothing along that lines either.
But I would ask if they're not, having the report cards issued on these schools, like you said, where are the parents going to get their information to make their decision as to whether these voucher schools are where they want to send them? You know, so. And also in his announcement, he talked about how he's going to ask the legislation, legislators to put forth legislation to eliminate any requirements that schools use Common Core standards, thus allowing common education standards and goals to be set at the local level by parents, teachers, and school board members who are cognizant of the unique needs of their children and students. I don't think that means he doesn't like Common Core. I think a lot of stuff that's in it is, is like what Jim was talking about, about finding an attractive employee with all the skills they need. I think he's just really a proponent of local control. That sound right to you?
Yeah. I had one parent talk to me about Common Core, who brought up the fact that their grand, well, I'm sorry, it was a grandparent, their grandchild is going to private school now because, it was because of Common Core, but it also was because of Christian holidays and things like that. And that wasn't the purpose of the vouchers, you know? So it's getting beyond the quality of education issue. It's, they're using Common Core now. She didn't believe in the premise of Common Core and what she's hearing on the radio stations, you know? And so now, that's why they switched, because of that. And it wasn't, her grandchild didn't go to Franklin schools, but, you know, it just was another issue to have to, you know, have a debate about with her.
And I think, I also heard over the weekend, talking to somebody on Common Core, that they thought it was, you know, well-intentioned, but one of the things she was concerned about is that parents feel left behind, because they, they don't feel capable of helping their children in math anymore, because they, they're not connected to that curriculum. So, I mean, maybe we need to kind of relook at how we are interacting with parents on Common Core. You know, it's not, I mean, I look at the Common Core, those standards, they're not real parent-friendly. I don't think they are. I don't know if any of them read them. So maybe we need to pay attention to that particularly, if, as Janet just mentioned, they're, they see public tools representing Common Core, they, regardless, you know, they think they don't like Common Core, so they go someplace else. But if they understood Common Core better, they might be in a better position to retain and attract.
That argument holds very little weight in education these days, I believe, because education is changing. For example, if you take a look at everyday math implementation for us several years ago, we had a number of parents who didn't understand the change, but it was one of the best things we did in our district in terms of math comprehension and achievement, and so on and so forth, and Common Core had nothing to do with that. It's just a new way of doing things that sometimes it's, the parents don't understand, because it's different than the way we learned it. And to throw it under the Common Core bus is easy for some people to do, but every time somebody brings up Common Core with me, I simply ask them if they've ever read it. And I would bet you 100% of the people that I've talked to have never even read it. They don't, they don't know what it is. And like Janet said earlier, it's more of the political posturing that here's how it evolved, and people trying to jam it down our throats, and those kinds of things. So it's, you know, everybody's got an opinion, and everybody's got a, you know, a position on it, and so on and so forth, but it goes well beyond, I think, just saying that the Common Core is bad. Even politicians, there was an article last year about our, I think it was our state legislature, but it might have been a little wider than that, that so many of the aides to the legislators are the only ones that ever read the document, the legislators themselves never read it. Well, how can you put accountability in place when the people that are voting on it haven't even read the document? So the politics issue comes into it in a big way, I think.
A point to both what Linda and you said about everyday math. I remember when we switched, and I remember sitting out here, because they had listening sessions and teaching sessions for parents, so they understood it. So I agree with you that if we understood it better, it'd probably be more well-received. So, and that was a testament to the district that they included the parents into the whole change of the curriculum.
I'm just curious, we've been talking about this for how many years now? And I could see, just kind of stepping back, I can see, first of all, I think when you say Common Core, it's got a connotation. Most people hear it, and they, I think most people have a negative opinion right away, whether they've read it or not, whatever. But then I kind of, I almost see this playing out as public schools and private schools and like marketing to their audience. And so it's like, are we going to be then, I mean, some of the standards we set in place, I understand you got Common Core, and then we put in our standards, which are even higher than that. But I could see us marketing our district, and what we're doing here is probably not even talking a whole lot about the Common Core. And I'm just wondering if there's been any discussion, I mean, this is fresh, this thing that he just came out with is pretty fresh, but how we're going to talk about what our standards are, because we can't use that as the benchmark now, or not yet, but I mean, that's where things are going. I'm just curious, because that's kind of what we're, we're essentially going to be marketing our public education for, for kids.
All right. Thank you. And our next item is 9C, Board Goals Update.
We wanted to bring this issue for you, because we had talked previously about the board goal being focused on the middle school. And part of that was, is we contacted Bill Foster and asked Bill to write up a proposal for us to take a look at during the survey and so on. And School Perceptions is just very, very high-quality in terms of helping create the survey and make sure it's worded and phrased appropriately, but it also addresses the issue. In your packet, you had the cost breakdown for the different phases, phases one, two, and three, and that totals up to about $9,800. In comparison to the survey we did regarding the new school and so on and so forth, that was nearly $14,000. But this has a much narrower focus, so it's not as, doesn't have as much of a broad impact in terms of the questions and so on and so forth, it'll be much more focused. Should the board, and we hope that the board would approve us moving forward with the survey, that that will include Bill coming in, talking with all of you as a board, getting your input, and sort of starting the process to do this. So tonight, we're simply here just to show you what the different survey phases are, what's all involved within those phases, and this is nothing new, this is the same thing we've been doing. I would say that in every instance that we've used School Perceptions, and we've used them quite a bit in the district, actually, we've been very fortunate, I think, to have the data that these surveys have provided us to be able to assist in our promotion of whatever we were trying to do, but also sometimes just as an informational piece for being able to say that here's how, you know, parts of the community feel about certain things. This one will be a little bit different in scope, as I said, because of the focus being primarily on just the middle school. We're not going to include all kinds of other things, so it's got to bear in our focus. So what we'd like to do is just simply ask the board to agree that we should move forward with the survey, and then from here, we will contact Bill and say, okay, we're going ahead. He just emailed me today and asked where we were at. And then he would start the process for developing the surveys and preliminary things, that he would come to us then and say, okay, here's, and he would have a lot of questions for the board as a whole. And then the intermediary would be Debbie and Amy and I, meeting with Bill, gathering the information, getting it out to you, and so we just proceed that way. So it's a little less expensive than the last survey, but it's also a much more focused survey as well.
So what kind of timeline are you expecting?
That would be part of the survey. As you look under Phase 1, the second bullet point, their Assistant Development Overall Project Strategy and Timeline.
Well, do you have something in mind?
Pardon me?
Do you have something in mind?
We do, but it's, until we be able to sit down and get everybody's input on it, you know, we originally said what we wanted to do is start the process for getting the survey out to the public late spring or possibly early summer. That would be the first part of it. And then we have, you know, there's, the ultimate discussion is going to be, if we were to go to a referendum, when would that occur? We've never hit that. The surveys have also allowed us to be very transparent. So, you know, there's a sentiment that, you know, the public has communicated, at least in the last referendum, there were a lot of people that, you know, supported the middle school. But are they ready to do that, you know, from a financial standpoint and so on? And we're just coming off the one that we are completing now, so that timeline would be established as we get further down the road a little bit when we do the surveys. And that's something that Bill and all of us would have some conversation about.
The translation service that's included in here, did we have to use that on our last survey at all for any reason?
We had to have it available, because one of the populations out there that we had to address, we need to make sure that we have everybody.
But we didn't need to, did we need to use it at all?
I think we, maybe once, one or two instances, we did.
So let's say it's the Hmong population?
It could be.
So it's just translating the survey one time into Hmong?
Well, yeah, for the most part, but we would have to do it in a way, because sometimes that population would be a large group of people. Last time, we were prepared to have them come in as a group, a large group, into a meeting area to be able to disperse the survey at one time to, I'm just grabbing on a number, 100 people at a time, but to be able to have 100 copies of that, to have the translation and so on and so forth, and then on the other end, to be able to interpret those. But it's also one of those things that if anything in here isn't really of scope to us, we don't put a necessary time into it unless we have to, you know, like the translation services, but we do have to make it available.
Oh, yeah. And there was one part in here, so we're approving this exact document. That's what you're asking for.
Well, basically, we're just proving, moving forward with the estimates of the cost here, which are about $9,800. As you look at number, or below the cost estimates, there's also some data in there that talks about if additional visits are required, or, you know, those kinds of things, you know, associated costs, I guess, like anything. You pay for the service, but then if you ask for more, you know, if we ask Bill to come back two more times, it might cost us another $1,000, or, you know, postage might be an issue, or whatever it might be if it were to go up.
It doesn't include printing and postage?
Does not. We use the host of corrections for that, so it works, from an economic standpoint, it works out pretty well for us.
It's been, what, three years since we surveyed? When was the last time?
About that.
Are you looking for a motion, or just a verbal consensus?
Yes. Just motion to proceed with the survey is what we're.
Well, I'll make a motion to proceed with the survey as recommended.
Second.
And we have a motion by Mrs. Klein, and a second by Mrs. Larson, to proceed with the survey as recommended. Is there any discussion?
And we'll see the survey before it goes out?
We'll develop the survey. We'll be involved in the development of it. It's just not, we're going to turn it over to him. He's going to ask us lots of questions, you know, get some direction from us, and then be able to, this would be a give-and-take, if I remember correctly, we went back and forth probably three or four times last time with the survey.
All boards involved on that just, okay.
Yeah.
Bill Foster actually will come here and we'll all discuss it.
Yeah.
Because there's one line in here that says, "The board or subcommittees would review it if applicable."
Last time, we did it as a subcommittee, just because of the nature of the speed going back and forth, we had a lot of people involved in it, you know, it was, it was very different last time.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Extension? Motion carries. Thank you. And then I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session to discuss employment, promotion, compensation, and performance evaluation data for administrative staff pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.85, Sub 1, Sub C. Can we hear that motion?
Sub 1.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski. Any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
I say yes. Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
We are now in closed session.